Second item, which is 69 and 71-73 Green Street, located within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. It's docket number 163169, block 486, lot 25 and 23 in the borough of Manhattan. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness. These are two cast iron store buildings with Neogrec style components designed by Henry Fernbach and built in 1876-77. The application is to remove the fire escapes and balconies from the front rear facades and construct an entry vestibule at 71-73 Green Street.
Good morning. The proposal is for work at these two identical cast iron facades on Green Street, on the west side of Green Street.
Louder.
Sorry? I'm sorry. Catherine Redd, Preservation Department Staff. Good morning. The proposal is for work at these two identical cast iron buildings on the west side of Green Street between Spring and Brum. The proposal and presentation have changed slightly since they were advertised and presented available to the public, and now the rear fire balconies will not be removed. The current work is to remove the front facade fire escapes, to repair the brick pair of it on 71-73 Green Street, just to the right in that photo, and to construct an exterior vestibule at the northernmost bay at 71-73 Green Street, which you see in this lower right-hand corner. And architects Lee Smarts and Joseph Bellomardi are here to describe this further.
Hi. So as Catherine mentioned, my name is Lee Smarts. I work with Joseph Bellomardi, and this is our proposal. So these two buildings, as she mentioned, situated in the Soho Cast Iron District designated August 1973. They're two, both designed by Henry Fernbach, 1876-77. So it's a cast iron facade prominently displaying Neogrec Greek Revival forms, and they contribute to the incredibly homogenous appearance of Green Street and to the overall quality and character of Historic District. As you can see in the historic photos, I just want to mention right off the bat, both buildings once had beautiful cornices, which, based on what we can glean from evidence on the facade of fire damage, we believe that they were destroyed at some point during the fire. We're not exactly sure when, and were never replaced. We are conducting more research into this, and we are, our plan is to sort of implement a Phase Two down the line and address these cornices at that time. So obviously, we're going to have to do further research, but that's the plan. So first of all, I want to address the new painted metal vestibule. This is just some precedent in the neighborhood for projecting vestibules. The vestibule will project one foot three inches total from the building face, and obviously, we're basing our design off of historic tax photographs and taking cues from multiple examples throughout the district. So here is proposed versus existing. As I mentioned, it's projecting one foot three inches from the existing building face, so we do have an application with the DOT for this, and we do anticipate approval. And we've also, let's see, sorry, I'll get to that later. But we also have already removed the, there was a covering over the original historic fire shutters. That's already been removed, so you can see there in the proposed, that's already visible. So that's done. Okay, so here's just some details of the existing vestibule or non-vestibule as it exists now, and this is just some details of what we're proposing. It's going to be painted to match the surrounding facade color, which is based on historic paint analysis done by Javon Skins, and I brought the paint sample in case you guys want to see it. Okay, so the new vestibule will be installed within the existing metal framing, and the new installation will not be bolted, welded, welded or otherwise fastened in any way to the existing cast iron columns or the facade. So here we have an existing elevation, and so next I'll be addressing the removal of the fire escapes only at the front facade. The plan was initially, was initiated based on constant maintenance issues arising from the rapid deterioration of the fire escape connection points, and maintaining the fire escape was very costly, on top of the fact that the deteriorating bolted connection points were a source, or are a source of water infiltration, and that further serves to deteriorate the cast iron facade, which obviously is not ideal of what we're trying to save. So if we are approved to do this, obviously, we will follow approved methods for patching and repairing the connection points once it's removed, with cocks and fillers to make them weather tight and impervious to further damage, and all patches will be primed and painted to match the surrounding color. Furthermore, on top of this, we are proposing that all remaining non-historic infill windows that exist on the property are replaced with these windows, which we've already had approved under CNE 16-0635. So where you see that they've already been replaced, that's done, and then we are proposing to replace the rest of these. And here we have, sorry, I'm just going to go here. So this present day photo, I took this last week, this illustrates that the windows have already been installed from there, so moving forward, we're going to address the rest of them. And actually, we have this streetscape, which illustrates the fact that there are many buildings on this block of Green Street that do retain their fire escapes. However, I feel like these, there's some distinctions that must be made because they are important in determining the parameters for prescribing historic value to a building appurtenance, and that is that these fire escapes are 20th century labor law additions. They're not original to the building, and we feel that these non-historic fire escapes detract from historic detail and integrity of the cast iron facade. Secondly, I'd like to point out, there are multiple instances of precedent for fire escape removal, and these are all just on Green Street. And lastly, I'd like to point out that there are a majority of surrounding buildings that do maintain their fire escapes directly around 69 and 71 through 73 Green Street. However, these are 19th century fire escapes, original to the building, have beautiful detail, and actually contribute to the overall design of the building, and I feel like that's a very important distinction to make. Not all fire escapes are created equal, especially in a Historic District. So I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Joe. He's going to discuss some of the egress issues that were brought up by tenants that we feel, we felt the need to address because we want everyone to feel safe in these buildings.
Good morning, Commissioners, Joe Bellomardi, architect. I wanted to address fire and safety because there are, is a resolution from the Community Board and some comments about that. The two buildings are each five stories high, sort of a typical cast iron, heavy timber building that one finds in Soho. The egress in each building is a 49 inch wide stair, and there's a fire balcony in the rear, and each building is 100% sprinklered, and as mentioned, there is an existing 20th century fire escape on each building. What we're proposing to do is to make each stair completely contained in a two-hour enclosure and to have fireproof self-closing doors, to give each building, and each building only has four tenants, there are only four tenants above the first floor, so each, and the unit goes front to rear, so each unit has access to the fire balcony in the rear. We're going to make it possible that each tenant has access to each, their stair in their building and the stair in the adjacent building, so that there's then access to two fire enclosed stairs, each occupant in the building, and the rear fire balcony. On top of that, we are proposing to install the deluge system at each of the columns in the building. In fact, there is an application on file with that already, and we've installed the deluge system in four of the units already. The application is filed at the Fire Department, Fire Department deferred to the Building Department, Building Department fully examined it, and all objections have been removed except for the Landmarks Commission application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Any questions? All right. And strictly speaking, I think the issues of egress is really under the purview of the Buildings Department, but I just, because you mentioned this, is it that you're allowing the two buildings to connect internally? Right now, they're two separate buildings, and now you're going to allow them to connect so that they can have access to the egress on the other side?
Correct. We're going to make a connection on each floor. I think I also should add that the minimum requirements, which is the typical thing in Soho, is that there's one internal stair and a fire escape, but for buildings under 75 feet, and these buildings are both under 75 feet, just one means of egress is required on the inside. And so we're providing two means of egress, a fire balcony and a deluge system.
Okay. Are there other questions? All right, we'll take testimony. Vincent Fang. Each person will be given three minutes.
I am Vincent. I'm representing Councilmember Margaret Chin. On behalf of the council member, I would like to read out her testimony and enter it into the written record. Thank you to the members of the Landmark Preservation Commission for having this hearing today. I am submitting testimony in regards to the two landmarked buildings in my district, located at 69 and 71-73 Green Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. The proposal application requests approval for the removal of the fire escapes and fire balconies in the front and rear facades of the buildings, and to construct an entry vestibule at 71-73 Green Street. This application first appeared last year from, with the same request, on May 22, 2014, at the Manhattan Board, Community Board to, Manhattan Board, Community Board to adopted a resolution expressing the concerns of the tenants living in these two buildings. One major concern involves the lack of second means of egress if the fire escapes were removed. The existing wooden stairs in both buildings also serve as a huge impediment to a safe means of egress. While the stairs may meet code, they are steep and rickety, which incites more alarm than security for the tenants. Although the fire escapes are not original, it has added to the character of this Historic District. The resolution was sent to former LPC Chair Robert Tierney on June 6, 2014, requesting for the denial of this application. The application was subsequently withdrawn and did not go to the LPC for review. This year, the applicant decided to once again request the LPC to approve the removal of the fire escapes and balconies on the front and rear facades of these buildings. On March 17, 2015, many tenants attended the CB2's Landmark Committee meeting to express their apprehensions about how the removal of these fire safety structures would place them in imminent danger. The committee voted to recommend the LPC to deny the request to remove the fire escapes. The applicant has taken into account the feedback received at CB2's Landmark Committee meeting and agreed to leave the fire escapes in place, fire balconies in place, excuse me, at the rear of the building to provide, and I quote, "a further area of sanctuary in the event of the fire," close quote. However, these, this does not assuage any of the major concerns that the tenants still have. Last Thursday on March 19, I attended CB2 full board meeting with many of my constituents in mind. I expressed my own concerns at this meeting, and I urged the LPC to seriously consider the safety and the welfare of the tenants. This should be a top priority when considering the request to remove the fire escapes. CB2 ultimately voted unanimously to once again recommend the denial of this application to the LPC. Since last year, my office has worked closely with the tenants of these buildings regarding this, these very valid concerns about the safety in case of a fire. The residents' active presence at the Community Board meetings and fervent advocacy to preserve these, excuse me, fervent advocacy to preserve these, to preserve these fire escapes is a testament to the urgency of this matter. My staff also made a recent visit to the building and left with questions about the validity of a safe means of egress without any fire escapes. Please keep in mind that these buildings were built as early as 1876. They are longstanding buildings that require proper care and maintenance. While LPC look into the aesthetic value of these fire escapes and balconies, I hope that the applicant can invest in the preservation and maintenance of them. With this said, it is unclear what the real intention is for removing the fire escapes. Soho has become one of the most flourishing neighborhoods in my district. Every day, Soho draws thousands of visitors to its local and commercialized business, but we can't forget that this historic neighborhood is a birthplace for artists, many of whom continue to live in these lofts, which double as cultural workspaces. Today, Soho continues to attract many property owners and developers who want to bring in more commercial use as well as luxury housing. This is another indication of the growing value of this neighborhood, and we need to make sure that the property owners are finding ways to help the city preserve these Historic Districts. I want the LPC to keep in mind that any changes within the Historic District should remain contextually appropriate, but also ensure that tenants, as well as these buildings, are well protected to preserve the historic character that is known as Soho. Priorities should go to protection, maintenance, and preservation of these buildings, especially if an unfortunate circumstance such as a fire should occur. I want to make sure that all these aspects are taken into account by the LPC, and that any long-term impact of this proposal should be in the best interest and safety of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. Since the fire escapes will be removed, HDC asks that the fire shutters remain in the rear. As Soho increasingly intains a polished patina, reminders of a once industrial past have become scarce. Details like fire shutters beckon interest and whisper to the passerby of a grittier time, and these details should not be discarded. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Gorman?
My name is Patrick Gorman. I've lived in Soho and 71 Green Street since January 1970. Walking through the area bounded by the Bowery, Sixth Avenue, 8th Street, and Canal, citizens and tourists are rightly impressed by the number of stately buildings embellished with cast iron fronts and a forest of fire escapes. The uniqueness and historical importance of these structures has resulted in landmark designation. This area has come to be known as Soho and NoHo. The Fire Department has a different historical name for this area. They call it Hell's 100 Acres. Unique in historic cast iron decoration, with attached iron fire escapes over brick facades disguises the fact that these buildings are to a large extent wooden structures. Rafters and joists are wood, over 140 years old. Floors are wood. Stairwells have wood steps, wood railings, and wood wainscoting. Elevators shafts are wood, and many of the support columns are wood. It takes little imagination to see these buildings as huge wood burning furnaces enclosed in fire brick and cast iron with a ready supply of 140-year-old kiln-dried fuel. Under these conditions, fires are easily ignited and difficult to put out. The history of devastating fires and loss of life that plagued Lower Manhattan resulted in new laws to be enacted to address the concerns of a vocal public. These laws enacted in 1871 mandated a second means of egress to the Hell's 100 Acre Buildings. The law gave significant protection to the nine-to-five factory workers then and to the 24/7 residents of Hell's 100 Acres today. Fire escapes were effective in the 1870s and are effective today. A recent history that demonstrates their historical importance is a four alarm fire at 82 Green Street, a building with sprinklers and fire escapes. A fire late in the night did substantial damage to this building. The water from sprinklers and hoses caused a water-soaked ceiling to collapse, nearly taking the life of a firefighter. Tenants awakened from sleep, were unable to flee by using the smoke-filled stairwells. Residents raced to the roof and safety on the building's historic mandated fire escapes. Installed sprinkler systems were not a perfect solution in this instance. Escape via fire escapes proved the historic value of a second means of egress. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Portella?
I have some images. Did I put them up there? Or? Okay. That's kind of like a play ball distance of two minutes of time. Sorry. Good morning, Chair Shinavatson and fellow Commissioners. My name is Patricia Portella. I'm a resident at 71 Green Street on the fifth floor. I'm here today to just discuss some of the relevance and the significance of the fire escapes on the buildings at this hearing today. I know a lot has been said about the originality of these fire escapes, but I think that that might be a hard point to prove, and certainly using the term 20th century addition sounds like, you know, they were put on in 1960. I have an illustration of historic buildings dating back from 1890s. In fact, there's a photograph of Green and Third Street that illustrates fire escapes on buildings. Fire escapes were first mandated in 1871. I have a copy of the law here, which mandates retroactive fitting of the fire escapes onto buildings. At that time, in 1871, lots of people were coming up with all these crazy ideas of what a fire escape should be. It wasn't really until 1884 when the standard kind of iron slatted fire escape that we're all familiar with was patented. So I think our building being built in 1876-77, having a mandated fire escape attached to it potentially in 1884 or thereabouts, is pretty close to original. I would say, okay, you can't say it's, but I don't know who could say it. One of the things that I'd like to point out about these fire escapes, just again for the historic significance, is aside from all of the main fires which helped to create the laws and mandates in Manhattan regarding not only fire safety but also building codes, the buildings are, all have them on our block. There is a side-by-side picture of our block, which is block number 486 and 485 on the east and west side. That's over there. It really shows, it's just this one single block where, between Brum and Spring, where our buildings are located, that has, out of the 18 buildings whose facades face this street, every one, except for one building, has front-facing facade fire escapes. And if you look closely at the images, they're all really similar. There may be one or two ornate ones on the King of Green Street, but in general, they're all pretty much the straight slatted iron fire escapes. I have also illustrations showing Henry Fernbach, who's the architect of the building.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. I did present all of this and submitted it to you, so hopefully you have copies of that as well.
Okay, thank you. Joanne Coyle?
I'm here to oppose the removal of the fire escapes. My brother was a fireman and a fire marshal. We have a lot of connections. My uncle was a fireman. We have a lot of information about fire escapes and what they do for supportive people. Fire escapes are a longstanding part of and help define, help define the visual landscape of Soho, but they are also anchored to Soho's wood-laden buildings to serve a very real purpose for those who live and work behind the cast iron facades. I'm here to read a statement from John Yakovon of the Fire Department of New York, who's a project manager and engineer in the Bureau of Fire Pretention located in Metro Tech, Brooklyn. Fire Department of New York concurs with Community Board Two and opposes the removal of fire escapes in conjunction with present egress construction and this building's current compliance with the New York City Administrative Code. Deputy Chief O'Keefe from our Bureau of Operations analyzed and commented from the perspective of life safety and potential problems from an operational standpoint. His itemized assessments pertain to overall safety for all building occupants and from the perspective to conduct potential fire operations, from search and rescue to fire suppression. Aesthetics is secondary to life safety and structural integrity when confronted with any changes that would compromise the same. This is a landmark building that presently has fire escapes, but with their removal would place both building occupants and Fire Department of New York staff with an endangerment. The proposed renovation is a major egress issue that cannot be taken lightly. Passive fire protection that includes sound construction and code compliance is a first line of defense. For the record, Fire Department of New York is opposed to this filed application to remove those fire escapes presently on file with landmarks and subject to this public hearing. And in this reference, he references Deputy Chief O'Keefe, who's a retired chief of the Fire Department. And in a conversation with Patricia Portella, Mike O'Keefe suggested that this, that the new consideration to cut doorways through each of the stairwell levels would in fact possibly contaminate both stairwells for fire exit. This still does not address the lack of an independently enclosed stairwell. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just suggest that if you have letters from the Fire Department, you really should show, speak with the Buildings Department, because the Buildings Department will sign off on issues of egress and life safety. And so we're just one part of the process, but after that, they have to get their permits from the Buildings Department. So if you have that, I would encourage you to speak with them.
Yes, and I do remember that in, a few years back on 8082 Green, Landmarks did refer to accepting a fire escape expansion and mentioned that there was a real safety concern. So Landmarks did address it at one point. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Campbell?
First, I'd like to point out a couple of, respond to a couple of points that the architect made. One is, he referenced multiple dwelling law 277, and that removal of the fire escapes would leave it in compliance with that because of the sprinkler system. I note that multiple dwelling law 277 also requires, though, that enclosed hallways or enclosed stairways shall have a one-hour fire-rated sprinklered, non, it should be fire-rated, and the stairs in this building are wooden. They are not fire-rated, as far as I'm aware. I'm not an expert, but frankly, I don't think he is either. The other thing I was going to say is that wooden stairs under the multiple dwelling law are permitted to be retained only if, in addition to meeting all the requirements set forth therein, they are within a fully set forth therein, they are within a fully wet sprinkled enclosure and the stair and landing softlet are fire-retarded. I don't think that's the case here either. But again, I'm not an expert, but I don't think he is either. Couple other points I'd like to make. The other buildings on Green Street, which they pointed out as not having fire escapes, I believe are of newer construction, again, are not wooden as ours is. And finally, leaving the balcony on is not sufficient to address our concerns. The only access to the balcony from my apartment and from my adjoining neighbors is through the wooden hallway. Therefore, if we are unable to get out the door into the hallway, we have simply no place to go. And the other thing I would like to point out is integral to the history, and I think this is something Ms. Chin pointed out as well, is that these are not traditional residential buildings. The 82 loft laws were enacted to regulate conversion of these residential buildings, of these buildings into residential use. Part of that enactment was to address fire concerns because, as pointed out, these buildings have a history being known as Hell's 100 Acres. So I would just like to point out that not only is it historical in relation to their nature as Hell's 100 Acres, it's frankly also historical in their conversion and their update and the fact that you have people here who are currently living here, who are artists, who have been here since the 70s. And I think that's an important factor to take into consideration. And so not only would it be unsafe, but frankly, it's inconsistent with the history of the building, the evolution of the neighborhood into a residential area.
Thank you. Mark Sahim? I'm sorry? Ellen Sillerwood? I think I've got this word, her name. Would you like to speak? Okay, thank you. Johannes Salinrod?
My name is Johannes Salinrod. I'm on the fifth floor at 69 Green. I represent three generations of people, artists. We've been there since '73. My son is a musician. He's there. I'm a painter. My wife is a painter. My son is a musician, and now we have a grandson who's eight, all in this building. The building burned before we moved in, maybe 10 years before, in the 60s. Cast iron columns, which were in the center of the building, because the joists are not continuous, they're overlapped on a central spine, and then there's a cast iron columns. All the cast iron columns melted, and the roof caved in. So the fire quality of these buildings is great, you know. And the stairs that we have from the fourth floor to the lower floors is much steeper than the other stairs. And so, and then the architect said, well, you know, you can almost go up to the roof, but you have to go to the roofs through the same stairwell. So there is only really, the only second form of egress, and in the case of a fire, probably the only form of egress is the fire escape. Therefore, I suggest we should keep the fire escapes. The other thing is if the architect really wants to improve the building's historical quality, he should put in new corners. There's a missing corners in the, if you look at the photographs, 69 has no more corners. The earlier photographs do show a corners. And also, the elevator, Fred elevator is all bricked up and it looks really cheap. If you wanted to improve the looking at the side of the building, that would be a great help. Okay, that's just about it.
Thank you. Patricia Ali?
My only point is that he said he wanted to leave the back fire escapes in. When you get downstairs, there's no place to go. I own 77 Green Street. There's a big wall, and tenants could go down there, but they would not be safe. There's no place to go.
Thank you. Vincent Stroud Manis?
He's left now.
He's left? Okay. Will Salinrod?
Commissioners, good morning. So I don't have anything prepared, but there's a couple of things I've noted. It's kind of cute how they've left the pictures of the buildings without fire escapes, but that picture on the bottom left is between Prince and Spring, and I believe two of those buildings are, were put up in the past 20 years, so those are totally different. And the other thing is, I don't think they've really established the reason why they want them to be removed, except for this morning, Ms. Mark said, you know, it's expensive to maintain the fire escapes. Well, it's turned into a very expensive neighborhood, and, you know, that's on the backs of the artists who built it. And, you know, the fire escapes aesthetically also are a huge part of the neighborhood. I mean, it would not be Soho without them. So, thanks.
Thank you. George Rosenfeld?
Good morning. I'll be very brief. I moved into 69 Green Street in June of 68, so will have been there 47 years this June. I share the concerns of my fellow residents about safety, and the architect has said that they will offer us additional egress through other wooden stairways. But the wooden stairways are a death trap. They are old, they are made of tinder, so that the only legitimate way out of that building in case of emergency is the fire escapes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Rosenfeld? All right, are there any more speakers on this item? Any more speakers? Yes, just one minute. We will, okay. Community Board Two submit a resolution, and I'm just paraphrasing. They recommend approval of the entryway vestibule, but would like more architectural details. They recommend denial of the removal of the fire escapes, which are contributing elements to the ambience of streetscape and should be regularly maintained. And they note that residents fear for safety if the fire escapes are removed and that the interior egress stairs are not adequate. We also received a package from the tenants.